To order the January seventeenth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, roll call please.
Commissioner Barbie.
Here.
Commissioner Buckley. Commissioner Castro.
Here.
Commissioner Crowell.
Here.
Commissioner Neer.
Here.
Commissioner Wright. Com- or Chair Christina Atherton.
Here. Approval of the agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? And if none, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Crowell.
Second.
Second by Castro, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Approval of the January third twenty eighteen minutes, any additions, deletions, or corrections? And if none, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of January third two thousand and eighteen.
So moved by Castro.
Second.
Second by Barbie, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. This is the public participation portion of the meeting. For anyone that has something that is not on the agenda, you're welcome to go to the podium. Seeing none, we will move on to the new business. A public hearing on the petition by James Mason of Mason Properties for text amendments to the Municipal Code, Chapter twenty-three Unified Development Ordinance Regarding Self-Service Storage Facilities. And I open the public hearing and start with Mr. Mason. And if you can state your name and address, please.
James C. Mason, businessman in DeKalb, one twenty Annie Glidden Road. Hello, everybody. It's a beautiful night to be inside. Let me see, see if I know how to do this. Got it. Okay. I'm here tonight to present the idea of interior heated storage. And so, Dan, do you want me to go through all these?
Sure.
Okay, okay. What I'll do is I'll answer these questions, and then what I'll do is I'll address every single one of those. Is that okay? You want me to read everything the proposal is?
I can think of just summarize.
I'll summarize, okay. What I'll do is kind of like go over, I'll summarize on what I've got here, which is what you gave me.
Okay.
Alright, folks, the history of the sites. I have two sites that would, I'd like to put into interior storage. And I gotta be honest, it wasn't my idea. It was my baker's idea. And so they've asked me, you know, I have thirty-one thousand square feet available in the community in two different sites. One is at fifteen hundred Sycamore Road. The other one is South Forest Street next to Mega Grande and Lehman's Drugs. And there's twenty-one thousand five hundred feet down there. And there's about ten thousand feet up here on where the old finest furniture used to be. So I took a look at the situation, and I have lots of requests for this. I have so much space available that I, it's a no-brainer for me. And Dan asked me a little bit of history about the sites. I've owned the one on South Forest Street for five, six years. I've never had a request to rent it unless it was basically for three or four dollars a square foot. We can't pay our taxes on three or four dollars a square foot. And then the piece of property on fifteen hundred Sycamore Road, I've owned that for ten or fifteen years. And since finest furniture went bankrupt, we haven't had any uses there. So I got to think, and I have these buildings that are in tremendous shape. And I'm aware of the rental business myself, because I'm in the apartment business. Everything in town that is rented has heated storage. I never thought about until, everything has heated storage. So if you have a store with groceries on the shelf, or if you have tractors or anything, so... This ordinance will cover heavy industrial, if you guys change this, it'll cover a lot of different things. So the history of my property is that before Sycamore Road was built out, South Forest Street was one of the best grocery stores in town. And then there was many uses over there on Sycamore Road. But now, because of Amazon, and because of what's happened on Sycamore Road, my property is a little off the beaten path, it's way back on the property, you know, and that's the way we used to do things. So these two pieces of property have not had a sewer of any consequence. And so that's one reason I'm looking at the two sites that I own today. Why self-storage would work? State of Illinois, I hate to say this, has lost, losing a hundred and fifteen thousand people a year, lost fifteen hundred businesses. And people are selling their businesses and their houses, but they don't want to get rid of their stuff. They don't. So instead of throwing everything they've had for many years and moved to Florida, they're renting property all over the United States, and it's a phenomenon that is very appealing. So my thoughts were self-storage is good for this community. We're in a little bit of transition here, as you all well know. So that's one reason I'm doing that. Type of storage, if you'll take a look at the proposal I gave you, I took pictures of other units. It's all metal, it's all sprinkled, it's all lighted. And I know many people that use this in other communities. DeKalb does not have anything in this league, nothing.
Jim, if you do have a slide on that, if you want to forward that.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, that is twenty by ten, right there, with personal property in it. This is the way the hallways work. If you look up to the top left, that's the sprinkler system. The light is in the middle. There's many manufacturers that sell these products. You see the sprinkler at the top, you see how the lights work? Again, we're back there. Both facilities have loading docks, both of my facilities, the one in South Forest Street has two loading docks, the one over on West Lincoln Highway has one, and I will engineer it to code. But I don't want people driving in the building. This property right here, you can drive in and out, that's the way they did. I don't have that kind of space. So what they do is they have these four-wheel carts. And you pull in or up to the back of the building, and you put it on your cart and you go to your facility. And then when you leave, you leave the cart. This is a facility on South Forest Street, it used to be a grocery store. Now it's a laundromat, it's Dollar General, and it's Lehman's. Lehman's not here tonight, but he wants to rent a lot of space. In fact, he wanted me to rent him space now. And I said, and he wanted it to be cordoned off so it would be secure, and I talked him out of it. I said, "No, I don't want to put up plywood inside a building and then have to tear it down." So why don't you wait, because I might be successful here with the planning commission, the city council, to make this proposal work. And then he will be a big tenant. I will probably have all this pre-leased, so as I go through, and I've done this over the last fifty years, I propose a project, I pre-lease it, like many developers do. So I put a new roof on there, it has new electrical. That building right there has its own sprinkling system, because it was a grocery store before. And we have two loading docks around the northwest, around the side there, the northwest corner. And then I have probably four acres or five acres of parking lot that will not necessarily be used. I don't propose on having junks in the parking lot. I don't propose to have anything at this time. What I would do is build another building. This facility right here is eighty-one hundred square feet, this used to be the finest furniture. And to the left of it is a doctor's office, who would also be included in this. The doctor moved out, but he still pays rent. If I do this deal, he gets off the hook. Next to that is the currency exchange that closed down a few years ago. That might be an office, or it might be rented also. Okay, now, any questions? Okay, by the way, I already said this, lack of, lack of, there is nothing like this in the town, except Red Dot has some buildings, and I was talking with Dave Baker the other day. And the building is not to the standards that I would be building. And I think they probably have two or three thousand square feet of heated, and it's always full. It's always full. Okay. It's an expanding industry. As I said at the outset, people are moving around, and they can't, they want to take all this with them. So this is kind of a fit for those folks. And if people choose to come back to DeKalb, at least their stuff will be taken care of. Can't see that far, so I'm gonna have to do this with this. Indoor self-storage. Tax amendment, tax amendment proposal adding indoor self-storage facility as a special use in the general, commercial, and light, uh, commercial districts. Create, this is what we're asking for, create a definition for indoor self-storage facility. Modify the existing definition for self-storage facility. I'm gonna give you the numbers, and I'm not gonna read all this, because I think you people really know more about this than I do. Proposed revised text Exhibit A. Amend the Municipal Code, Chapter twenty-three Unified Development Ordinance as follows. Article three oh one definitions by creating the use of self-storage facilities, interior unit access, and the following definitions. I won't read that, because you can do that. So what we're trying to do is modify twenty-three. Indoor self-storage facility proposed Exhibit A. Amend the Municipal Code twenty-three again, unified development ordinance as follows. Article three dash oh one definitions by deleting the definition for self-storage facility. Article three point oh one definitions by creating, again. So what Dan and Joe Allen are doing is they've created, I didn't do this, they've created the verbiage to make this possible. Next. Indoor self-storage facility proposed Exhibit A. Again amend the code, five oh one commercial density, five point oh eight general commercial, these are designations, adding self-storage facility interior use. Article five point one light industrial district by deleting self-storage facilities from the list of special uses. Article point eleven light industrial by adding self-storage facility interior unit access as permitted. Indoor self-storage facility again. Proposed, this is the change now, proposed revised text Exhibit A. Amend the Municipal Code twenty-three again, which is the old. Unified development ordinance as follows. And this will be about it, this is my last one. Article five eleven LC light industrial self-storage facility. Article five point one two heavy industrial by deleting self-storage facility from the list of special uses. Article five point one two high, heavy industrial by adding self-storage facilities units by special use. And the last, article five point one two heavy industrial district by adding self-storage. So I met with Dan and Joe Allen the other day and made this proposal. And I'm very pleased with all the thought process that's gone into this. And that's where we're at right now, and I'd like to take questions or see what the thoughts are from here on out. Any questions?
Not at the moment, unless...
There will be.
Yeah, there will be.
Should I sit down or talk to Dan?
We'll call you back up, we'll let the city...
I'll leave this chair right now, and you can talk with Dan.
Okay.
If it's okay, I'll put the picture back up.
Sure. So before I open to the public, I want to turn to the city for any comments.
Yeah, we had prepared a staff report in your packets. When we met with Mr. Mason, he noted his interest in the two locations as described, on South Forest Street and Sycamore Road. Those two locations, the one on South Forest Street's own light commercial, and the one on Sycamore Road is general commercial, which currently we do not allow self-service storage facilities as a permitted or a special use. Currently, we have that use as a special use in the light industrial and heavy industrial district. Actually, that was changed from permitted to special use in those two districts last fall. When it was approved, there were several text amendments we approved miscellaneous, that was one change we did make. So we advised that would require text amendment to the ordinance first. And we wanted to do that instead of doing the text amendment and special use permit at the same time. If we do the text amendment, again, this is not site-specific. He gave a couple examples of sites where he has liked to do this, so those are good examples. But again, this is a text amendment, affects the whole city of those districts they were talking about. So let me just summarize again the proposed amendments. So first of all, separating and defining, creating two uses, one for indoor and one for outdoor self-service, self-service storage facilities. We wanted to focus on how access is gained to those units in terms of the definition. So for the indoor self-storage facility, we came up with the use self-service storage facility interior unit access. And that's defined as a proposed, a building containing separate interior climate-controlled storage units of varying sizes, which are based, leased, or rented for the storage of customers' goods and wares, in which all storage units contained within the building have an access door from an interior hallway. And also noting this, this self-service storage facility interior unit access cannot contain any outdoor storage. For the outdoor self-service storage facility, most of the ones in the city are, the use would be self-service storage facility exterior unit access. And that's defined as a building or group of buildings containing separate non-climate-controlled storage units of varying sizes, which are leased or rented for the storage of customers' goods and wares, which have exterior unit access, generally consistent of single-story buildings with roll-up doors and direct drive-up access from the outside. And these facilities can contain outdoor storage also. So in light commercial and general commercial districts, again, self-storage facilities are not even in any of these districts permitted or special use. So we're proposing that the indoor self-service, self-service storage facility only would be a special use in those two districts. And again, the special use, because there are unusual characteristics, and some of these uses are looked on case-by-case basis, of course. And we've had, you know, several in the past years, special uses, as you know, we can adopt conditions for those. So depending on the location, they can be appropriate or not appropriate, and with certain conditions, based on where they're at, we can put those in the ordinance approving it. Some of the city's older existing commercial spaces, kind of gave Mr. Mason in the examples, have become somewhat obsolete, have become perhaps difficult to lease out to the typical retail user, as was testified earlier. So indoor self-storage facilities would offer an opportunity for these properties to get a tenant in, prove the value of the property, help draw some traffic to that area, help the other businesses in the area also. Allowing the indoor facilities in these districts too, you know, does raise some concerns regarding potentially taking up retail space, which these districts are mainly for. As kind of noted, these climate-controlled facilities have become pretty lucrative and popular. There's a lot of them out there that are building new locations in the suburbs, and there's some chains, you know, Life Storage or a few others, Metro, that are, you know, building them quite often. So we want to make sure they're not taking up the vacant space that might be for retail locations. So with that in mind, what we're proposing, or I'd like to get some feedback from the commission on, is this concept of a special use in those two districts, light commercial and the general commercial district. But in addition, we're suggesting that they only be allowed in existing buildings and not newly-built facilities, because the newly-built facilities will tend to take up those prime commercial areas closer to the road, compared to the existing commercial buildings, tenant spaces, which may be, you know, vacant for some time, et cetera. Also looking for feedback if, also if we would allow expansion of an existing building to accommodate these, or just only in the existing space. And also discussion if you prefer they would have, only take up a portion of the building, or would be allowed to take up the entire building, existing building. So those are the couple of things, we're looking for some feedback from the commission on regarding that, particularly in the general commercial, light commercial districts. Just a note, with the planned development commercial districts, those existing PDC locations, they have ordinances for those particular locations, so those would govern what uses are permitted, special uses or prohibited uses. So, and an owner of those properties can amend their ordinance at any time to add self-service storage facility in there, if they choose to do so. That would require a public hearing from the commission and council action, of course. And then in light industrial, heavy industrial districts, again, currently right now, the storage facilities, we don't distinguish between indoor and outdoor, they're a special use right now. Proposing that the indoor ones be allowed as permitted, and then as a special use, the outdoor ones be a special use. We also proposing to add a article, or section at the end of Article seven, Article seven's a supplemental district regulations. So when there's a special use permit request for indoor and outdoor facility, that some factors will be looked at, which would probably anyway in any special use, but listing these specifically to make sure we look at these when any special use for indoor or outdoor is looked at, that we look at access and traffic circulation, hours of operation. If there's any retail sales of packing or mailing supplies, some of these larger facilities do have some retail components to it, that, so that would affect the parking perhaps a little bit. Or hours, fencing, some of the existing facilities in the city have fencing, some do not. Lighting, indoor versus outdoor, that can create different needs on what lighting might be necessary. Architecture elevations, how the building's gonna look, screening, of course, if it's next to residential areas, security cameras, of course. Dumpsters, enclosures, make sure there may be a higher demand for dumpster space in some of these facilities, and make sure they're enclosed. Parking, you know, some of these indoor are gonna, like the example given, they're gonna require some parking outside, obviously. If there's a retail component, that's required a little additional parking. Some of the outside self-storage facilities, you just drive right up to your door, and there's really no parking required in true sense unless there's an office, so that has to be looked at for each one. And of course, the outdoor storage, thinking that the RVs, boats, the outdoor storage that are, sometimes do see at these facilities, we want to look at that too. So and again, each special use permit, as we look at it, we can add conditions based on the location. But looking at these factors, make sure we're looking at these and all those possibilities. So the recommendation, again, we don't have a specific recommendation, but looking for the commission's feedback, particularly with the special use component or that concept, allowing these indoor ones in the GC and light commercial districts. And also some feedback regarding the type of locations in terms of existing buildings or new buildings, how old the building, how long it's been vacant, perhaps, the tenant space. And if they can take up the whole building or part of it. You know, there's also the option, if you don't want to do any amendments, and an applicant can do a planned development and request certain uses or any commercial use in a planned development commercial district. So looking for direction and then, you know, feedback from the public, and filling your questions, and the answers given, we can... Direction given, we come back with specific changes at the next meeting, continue the hearing, come back with a specific recommendation, and then opportunity for the commission to take a vote on it.
Okay, great, thank you. So before I open up to the commissioners, I want to open to the public who have come to speak. I do have three requests, so we'll go in the order that I've received the requests. Will Heinisch? So when you go to the podium, if you could state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Will Heinisch, local businessman, property owner. Eighty-eight hundred South Rude Road in Kingston is where I reside. Business eighteen oh five East Lincoln Highway in DeKalb. Rental properties out, South Point Greens in DeKalb. I was before this planning commission probably a couple months ago in full support, when you were discussing the conforming, non-conforming residential, non-residential properties. And I think that this is another step in that direction in trying to open up and give more opportunity, increase values for people and property rights that own property. I fully support anything that the commission can do in thinking outside the box and trying to open up new opportunities for people in the community. I think it's very important that we're able to generate income and that allows to maintain buildings, generate property taxes, generate revenue, generate some jobs in this community. I've been trying to promote organic growth for four to five years, and we just haven't gotten it in this city. It's been very challenging with the state that we're in. And so I think the refocus now on reinventing ourselves, reinventing DeKalb, reinventing our uses of space and property so that we can use and maximize its potential is very important. So I am in full support of this proposal, and hopefully the planning commission will be the same. And hopefully it'll stimulate other ideas too, of how we can continue to increase more opportunities for people and businesses. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Jim Mitchell?
Everybody, Jim Mitchell, three oh seven Manning Drive, DeKalb. I know a lot about storage, so I was, when I saw this, I'm like, we are in desperate need of controlled temperature storage. We only have, as far as I know, and if I can't, if I'm wrong, please correct me, we only have one, and it's in Sycamore, owned by Red Dot at the time, at this time, and it is literally always full. And there are people out there that want controlled storage, there are people that need controlled storage. It's much better than the outdoor storage. Having dug through and worked with storage facilities for twenty-odd years now, I have seen what happens when you store your stuff in an outside storage unit. There's a lot of people that want to keep their things, and to keep their things nice, so they want, they want the controlled environment. There is lots of space in DeKalb, there is, I've been through Mr. Mason's places both times, both full spaces, and I know they will lend themselves very well to building these indoor storage facilities. The, basically, the indoor storage facilities, if you didn't know, it comes as a kit, and they self-design for the space it's gonna go into, and it's a, it's a great program, it's a, it's a wonderful thing. We have a lot of industrial space as well, that is not selling or not being used at this time. So maybe that's something for the future, but I think this is a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Hovis?
Jim Hovis, six one one Linden Place, DeKalb, Illinois. I have a industrial property at thirteen hundred South Seventh Street, and a downtown building across from Walgreens, one oh five North First Street. I'm here to fully support Jim Mason and his proposal. I'm quite impressed by the preparations that have been done here to not do it on a one-by-one basis with, with people coming in, but instead to look for an overall solution for the community. So that, we're speaking to all of the industrial properties, light commercial, heavy industrial, and, and looking at a common sense approach, saying, why can't you, you should be able to store... I was, I was very surprised that the idea that you could not use buildings for storage, I didn't, I didn't know that there were limitations to it. And I think it's, I think, I think every, every business and every, every storage place should have the opportunity to use whatever is legal, whatever kind of businesses they want to put into it. And we should try to minimize special uses for buildings and increase the number of uses for which you don't need any permits. You can just go in and do it, Jim can build the self-storage units here, and other people can too. And I think I'm very much in favor of looking ahead to other things besides self-storage, which could be put into buildings. I've had situations of people coming to me that want to rent space, and I discover it's a special use permit situation. And they say, "I've got to do something now, what's this process take?" And I say, "Well, you got to go to this planning commission, then that planning commission." And they, and so I've got one right now where the guy's going to Kane County. His board wants him to rent, but he can only find two places suitable for his application, my building on, on South Seventh Street, and one in Kane Land, the one in Kane County, rather. The one in Kane County... The one in Kane County, the board is saying, well, I guess we'll have to buy. If we can't go to the DeKalb Fest, we'll have to buy. And so I'm trying, I want to study the process Jim is using here, and I, so I can anticipate five, 10 things that my building might be used for, and I think, and then we apply it to all light industry and all heavy industry buildings. I think the zoning has been too restrictive to special situations and also that it, the process is too long. So I'm looking for, I'd like to find a speedier solution for people who come into town and they want to rent, and, but I'm especially here today because I think Jim Mason has done a great job of planning here. Joellen and Dan have great proposals on the wording, it's a very simple change, and I hope you guys can just jump into it and vote yes for Jim tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so I open to the commissioners for, to start our discussion, we'll give another opportunity for the public after we have a chance to ask our questions and get some, gather some more info if needed. So I'm going to start at this end of the table with Ms. Neer.
Well, the only question I really have, I mean, it makes sense, but it's just a point of clarification. One of the, on the third page end of the staff report in the first full paragraph, you make the statement that, let me find it here again, we would recommend that indoor self-service storage facilities only be allowed in existing building space and not be a part of an expansion to a commercial building. So you're saying this wouldn't, I understand the existing building, but you're also saying it would not be allowed, that an existing building would be expanded to accommodate this use, is that correct?
Correct.
What would happen if the use went into an existing building and it went great guns and they wanted to expand that building for that addition, for more space? Would, what would the process be for that? Would that be allowed up for, by right, or would that be another process to go through to do that?
Well, I think it depends on what the specific language, how that's going to be written, if that's agreed to, how that would be done, but if it's written where it can't be expanded, it's only an existing building, then that'd probably be an issue of that. Depends how the language is going to be written or direction from the commission, how we want to do that.
Okay.
But in that, with this specific language like that, it'll probably be an issue with expanding that, so if that's a concern, then you probably may not want to
Okay.
Have that. But that's all, all these are trying to, I think the goal is to try and avoid these facilities locating in prime retail space in parcels and lots that are, would be more apt to retail uses, so.
I mean, I mean, it's, it's not a huge concern, but it is a concern that all of a sudden you might be getting these mega storage facilities, and if you're close to a general commercial area, you could also be close to a residential area
Right.
At the same time, and I'd be concerned about the impact that would have on the adjoining neighborhoods. So that, that's my comment.
I'm in favor of pretty much everything that's been brought forward by the city and by the petitioners today in the audience. You look around most of our community, outside of, it could be a continuous neighborhood, I'm thinking of like Rockton, Roscoe, Machesney Park, places that have storage facilities that are amazing, and I know some of the owners of them, phenomenal business to get into, especially warm storage, because as is brought forward, people want to hang onto their stuff, and if there's ever an area that I can think of people that want to hang onto their stuff, it's this one, and they don't have the availability to do that, so I, I'm in favor of, like I say, the text amendments to bring a little bit of ease to this, to make this sort of thing happen. As far as the existing buildings and having it happen to them and allowing expansion of those, I share your concern. I, I get the idea of running away, and a lot of these facilities you look at in the north, they're kind of out in the middle of nowhere. At least most of them that I've seen, they're not as integrated into their local communities as what some of these would be, but at the same time, these local communities have changed and businesses need to be responsive to change if they want to keep being businesses, and we want to keep having money flowing and availability and opportunities for people. So that, that's going to be the hazy one. Other than that, I'm, I'm in full support of the, the general language that's been brought forth tonight by the, the city. I think it's, I think it's good. Make this happen, expand this, I know there's a desire for it. Ever since this was in the papers, everyone's asking me about it because they know I'm on this thing, so I, I support a lot of the work that's been brought forth by the city and the petitioner and everyone today, so.
Thanks.
So there are at least two levels of this discussion. The most explicit proposal that we have in front of us in terms of the packet has to do with the changes and the proposed changes, I'm sorry, to the UDO, and then, and then at a next level is the specific proposal that Mr. Mason is bringing in front of us. So let me address the first one to start with. The question regarding the first one in terms of changes to the UDO, my concern is, is not so much the specifics of what Mr. Mason is thinking for his own properties, but, you know, what is the overall picture here? And I talked to, to Mr. Olson about this map just before the start of the meeting, and the question for us to, to try to answer is, will this open up doors for other places where we may not be interested in having this kind of facilities? Goes again beyond Mr. Mason's specific proposals. So I haven't necessarily had a lot of opportunity to look into the map and how this would look if you had, you know, scattered properties like this one, developments like this one. I do understand the, the need, and I, I guess I believe the comments from the audience, that there might be a demand in the city of DeKalb, but there comes a moment that you put so many of these that you flip the balance, of course, that you have more offer than demand. So what, my, my question, my general question is, and without necessarily having an answer, I haven't had a lot of chance to look into this, my question is, what are the implications for the future in terms of the other developments that, that may come up? Again, I don't necessarily have an answer to that. Looking more specifically at the, the proposed changes to the UDO, I, I don't have, I don't have specific objections to it, it, it looks fine to me. I, I see how this was developed, I can see how this lines here were developed, and it, it looks more than fine to me. I, I only had one question, I think it connects a little bit with what Ms. Neer was bringing up on the third page, again on the top, regarding the, that this is, this kind of facilities are allowed only in existing commercial buildings and not be allowed in newly constructed buildings. And, and this is important, not, again, not so much because of the specific of what Mr. Mason is bringing up, but because of future situations. And, and one of the questions is, you know, what determines that a building has become obsolete? Is it space, is it the time that it has been on, in vacancy? I, I don't know the answer again to these questions, but I think we need some definitions on, on what that is. And I, my hope is that developers in town would be able to give some feedback on what that is, on what that definition is. As Mr. Mason mentioned in his presentation, retail is changing, and it's changing dramatically, and it will continue to change, and it would be really nice to have a more clear definition on what, on what an obsolete building is that would allow this kind of developments. I don't know if we are going to address today any of the specifics of what Mr. Mason is proposing, is this something that we will
No, that would come later if approved. This is strictly a text amendment, so affects the entire city, all these districts, and if this is approved in some fashion, particularly the special use in those districts, then Mr. Mason will follow up with the actual special use petition for those, and this ordinance will be in place, and then he'll go through that process.
So we will, we will continue having
Yes.
That discussion in the future. Let me then just say two more things. One of them is, I see that in that section seven, you're already addressing some of the, some of the things that we would, we may be entitled or interested in regulating regarding safety, sprinkler systems, stuff like that. I like the fact that you have started thinking about that and it's already there in the proposal. The, the second thing, just, just, you know, something that I have mentioned in this forum before is, is the need for creativity, and I think it has been brought up in this conversation, that we need to get creative about the places that we have and the places that we want to have in the future. I, I like the idea that we're thinking about this one specifically, and, and I look forward to this and more in the future.
Yeah, I agree with what has previously been said. I do have some suggestions for the wording. I also would like some more specification about the definitions, because we say exterior or interior access, so are there, I looked around a little bit on the internet, so are there exterior unit access storage buildings that are climate controlled? Because we exclude those. If there are exterior unit access storage buildings that are climate controlled, they would be excluded.
I don't know the, the amount out there, I guess there potentially could be that, but I think most of the climate controlled are going to be, or the access to that unit's going to be from the interior.
And on the other hand
To make sure that, that's, there's not some exterior door that goes up that you, and then goes into climate controlled area, but.
Because I saw some of the, and are there interior ones where there are roll-up doors? Because we seem to exclude things that don't have roll-up, that have roll-up doors.
The roll-up doors would be the exterior
Yeah. But I saw in the pictures that some of them looked as if it's an interior place and you can still roll up the door.
Yeah, if the access is through the interior, then it's the interior, although they may have a roll-up door.
I think we need to be more precise in the wording there.
Okay.
I have some other, I think there needs to be a proposition instead of a longer thing. Sorry about that. I really like grammar. And maybe using a plural at one point, but in general, I'm in favor of it because we need to look at new options for buildings that have been empty for a long time, especially one where Eagle used to be, and I live in that area. I'm also a little worried about the neighborhood because it abuts right to, to residences, and I don't know how much light pollution there would be if there is a storage facility and there's going to be light and how that would affect the neighbors.
That would be something we would look at when we get to that point of us
Yeah.
Looking at site specifics, but yeah.
And I, I like the idea that it is limited to existing buildings, because we need to, because some of those, and I'm sorry, some of those really are not pretty buildings, and we really don't need more ugly buildings in DeKalb. And so I, I really like the idea, we use existing buildings to, to do this and just repurpose the use. So it would go into this building, my dentist is right there. Yeah, I went there today, I'm still hurting. But that wouldn't affect the, the property next, that's also your property, Dr. Dwyer's office?
My whole office, yes.
The whole, but would that affect
Who is your doctor?
Dr. Dwyer?
Could you, could you go to the party, please? Hello, Mr. Mason?
I'm sorry. That's okay.
Well, it doesn't make any difference, yeah. What was the question?
Would that, like the brown buildings or whatever, would they be affected?
No, 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 no. Oh, no, no, that's Comcast there, that's Comcast. No. In fact, I just wrote down here, the lighting, as far as I'm concerned, would stay the same or less. You have to have, you have an alley over on South 4th Street, and you have an access to the back of that building right there, loading dock, so the lighting would be what it's been for the last 40 years, in my opinion.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
And that lighting behind the one on Sycamore Road, that kind of goes back, it like butts up to the, the driver's facility, right? Am I thinking right in that area?
Yeah, the driver's facility is over on the right of those brown buildings. I don't have all that picture, so, but there, I wouldn't plan on any more lighting we've had for 40 years, because everybody's been doing pretty good, and there would be no change, in my opinion.
So I just want to also mention, thank you for bringing this up. A couple of meetings ago, someone had brought something to our attention, and I think I made it public that we need more people in the community to come up with these ideas, and, and it's a great concept that I learned something new tonight. I didn't realize that there was one facility that Mr. Mitchell had brought up in Sycamore. I didn't even know there was one indoor one. But just the concept of it, I know people, my own family would love to have, you know, be able to have a, a storage unit that isn't going to ruin their goods,
Right.
And I think it is needed here in town. So thank you very much for bringing this up to us
Wow.
To, to open up that box, so I appreciate that. I do also kind of have, I, I'm glad Deb brought this up, because as Mr. Mason was talking, he's got this property on 4th Street that does have a lot of parking lot that could possibly have expansion done to it, and so I think we may, that's something definitely to think about, because why prohibit him expanding onto his property if there's room to be able to do it? So I think, in my mind, I think we might need to look at this a little bit more, so I don't have any further questions, but I do want to open up one more time to the public before we ask any further
Put on a quick, one statement?
Sure, yeah.
Expansions, I put down here, is on a case-by-case basis.
Sure.
These folks mentioned there could be another building guest, there must be, what, five acres there? And so, we'll be able to pack the, the semi-drivers that sleep on my property at night, I don't care. But someday, that, if, this could really be a big deal, I would, I would assume that this will all be pre-leased before I finish it. I do that. So I put on here, case-by-case basis, oh, by the way, and the market will set the amount of these facilities. That's one thing about America, if you get too much of something, it's always, gets to be too cheap. I'll sit down.
Good information, thanks. Okay, so I do want to open up again to the public, if anyone else has any further comments or questions that they may have. Mr. Hovis?
A comment was made that we should be looking at perhaps more, what is the definition of obsolete buildings? And you want to get something into obsolete buildings, let the market decide. Something, if something, you know, Jim's building has been empty for years where he wants to go in, so that would clearly meet just about any definition. We haven't been able to get retail in, or he hasn't attracted it. On the other hand, why, I don't think we have to come up with, with, say, anything as obsolete before somebody has the right to do it. If somebody has a building, it's in a logical location to put storage into it, it doesn't have to be obsolete, it's that the person has determined that that's the best use for it, let them do it. And in going with Jim's point, the market will decide, let the market decide these things. We shouldn't be making judgments, I don't think, about what each person could do, because they'll come up with, let them come up with their creative solutions and support them, rather than try to limit by putting in too many definitions about when you can do it and when you can't. Thank you.
Ma'am Chair?
Yeah.
Just one quick comment on that, and, and one of the comments that Principal Planner Olson provided in his statements was that this is something that's being recognized by banks and other investors as a lucrative business, and much like we've seen in our commercial areas where it's more lucrative to lease to an office user than it is a retail user, you know, we, we ended up in the community with a lot more offices in areas that we would have preferred to have retail. So that is one of the reasons we wanted to make sure that you understood that it's a good reason to put a special use if you want to have certain controls on there so that you can preserve as much of the prime retail space for retail sales tax generating uses, which is an important component for the city. Those are, that's kind of the, the premises for why we asked you to have consideration for special uses and controlling the amount of development or expansion of that development. With regard to expansion, I guess one of the things that you could consider, because it is a special use, if they started off with a special use and they wanted, it was successful and they wanted to expand it, and wanted to expand it on a case-by-case basis, the only way you could do that procedurally would be to come back and request an amendment to your special use. So, you know, that might be one way to do that, where it would be allowed by an amendment to the special use in those commercial districts.
Okay, good point. Okay.
So can I, just, just going on to this idea, the, the expansion, and there are many ways in which expansion can be interpreted, I mean, who knows if demand is so high that Mr. Mason decides, you know, I'm going to just tear down the whole thing and, and build, you know, one, one, two, three stories, facility, storage facility, you know, the very fact that he tears everything down and there is going to be a moment that there's nothing there, I mean, will, will building up or rebuilding, is that an expansion, is that really building from scratch, so on and so forth? Those are questions that are worth entertaining at this point, looking into the future and how this is going to look. And just responding a bit to what Mr. Hovis is, is talking about, I mean, it is absolutely not my intention to get into ideologies here of the way things intention to get into ideologies here of the way things should be. But I think the special use permit gives an opportunity for, to the neighbors and the city to say something about what is going to come into their neighborhood. What, and I am 100% in favor of that process, and that process where we all have something to say, or not something to say, but have a forum to say what we want to say, and put limits on what happens in our city. There is something, however, that may address, may be addressed by this commission in a different way, and that is the speed with which we do things. And the question that I would have for the city of DeKalb and for city staff specifically is, are there ways, if Mr. Hovis has a situation that is very time-sensitive for his business but needs the prompt attention of commissions like this one, is there a mechanism to call the commission a little bit earlier than what we were expecting, such that we can accelerate things? I don't know if there is an answer to that at the present time, and the question is, if there is no answer right now, can that be created for the future?
Well, I think what Mr. Hovis is referring to is special uses, a use that he proposed there that was a special use or not even clearly allowed in that particular district. So that would require amendment and special use permit, which they could do together at the same time. But there is requirements for hearing notices and to send out timeframes and meetings, and you know, it doesn't take all that too long. We try to expedite things as much as we can or get things through the process, but there are certain laws in terms of the timing that have to be met in terms of hearing notices and that. But we're open to other, you know, if there's a list of uses we want to look at that are special use in different districts that, you know, we can't really have a good reason why they are a special use, then they probably should be moved to permitted use. And we're open to listening to those from the business owners of, you know, here's a use that we see coming in a lot that wants to go in and, you know, like to change it to, or add it as a permitted use. We can entertain those at any time and amend the ordinance and go through that process. So we're always open to that.
Yep.
Kind of like this, the self-storage facility, so.
Yep.
So
Go ahead.
Could I just summarize, you know, discussion for kind of some of the things we're looking for directions? So definitely a special use for the indoor self-storage in the general commercial, light commercial districts, and it sounds like only in existing buildings and not new buildings, but some concerns regarding expansion or not, but that should be more of a case-by-case situation. And kind of defining obsolete, I guess, that kind of relates to how old the building is or how long it's been vacant. Maybe there's something we can add to the list of special uses, these other factors is, you know, how long it's been obsolete, and they have the applicant prove that in a hearing of case-by-case, how long it's been vacant, and prove the burdens on them to show that it's been obsolete by their testimony and evidence on that. And also, we talked about if it'd take up the entire building or just a port of a multi-tenant building. I didn't hear too much discussion on that. I don't know if that's a concern. I think we, it sounded like there wasn't much, we just leave it open. It could take up an entire building or a portion of one. It didn't really matter. So I didn't hear too much feedback on that, so I think we remove that. So I just wanted to summarize kind of from the discussion, if that all sounds agreeable from the commission, so. And as discussed before, probably moving on to continue the hearing, keep it open and to the next meeting unless there's any other comments or direction from the commission.
One more opportunity for the public. This will be continued, but if you have any further comments, go ahead.
I wanted to ask a couple, answer a couple of questions that I know about. There really is no such thing as outdoor controlled storage, simply because it would, the whole building is controlled storage, the whole building is humidified or heated or cooled or whatnot, so it kind of makes it a moot point. It's like having a $108,000 piano at the high school and not humidifying the wing of the high school, which they almost did, by the way. Anyway, roll-up doors, there was a question about roll-up doors. Roll-up doors save a lot of space as opposed to the swing doors that open up, you know, that's just a space-saving thing. You know, the main reason that people want controlled storage is they want their items to be like that is in their house. Now, when you move out of your house, and you, say you're a traveling professor or something like that, or you're going overseas or whatnot, would you want your stuff to be in your garage or in your house? And if you're going to put it away, you want it like your house. You want it as best you, make it the best you can to pull out when it comes out. People have asked me also about controlling rodents and varmints and bugs and stuff like that, and I said, "It's all professionally, professionally done." It's all, it's, in a non-controlled environment, you don't worry about that kind of stuff, because you really can't. You really don't have a choice with that. You can bait, you can, you can kill all the mice and the rats and everything like that. You can bed bugs and whatnot, and those kind of bugs die over the winter, so you never have to worry about that kind of thing. But with this, you have to be a little more proactive in that respect. You know, just a couple of things to mention. You know, I like Jim's idea of his parking lot for his, for truckers, but eventually, if this is, if this commission is, I know it doesn't have to do anything with storage, but if this commission has any kind of idea, eventually a truck stop would be nice for those truckers, instead of having to park at Jim's lot, because he doesn't have the facilities for it. But anyway, so I'm all in favor of this. If I can be of any assistance, like I said, I've been in the business 20 odd years, cleaned out everything from, yeah, y'all don't want to know what I've cleaned out. So if I can be of any assistance, most people know how to find me around here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions or suggestions from the commission before we take a motion to continue?
So the next meeting is February 7th. So in the motion, if we continue, we need a date, place, and time, so just make sure, let's mention your motion.
So I can move, or what?
If there's no further questions or comments, go for it.
So we just move that it be continued on February 7th?
At 6:00 PM in the city council
I move at 6:00 PM in this location.
So we have a motion by Barbie?
Second.
Second by Castro. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. And so we will continue the public hearing to February 7th. Reports.
Reports, next meeting, reports, February 7th. We have no hearings scheduled. We have a continued discussion on this, continued hearing, of course. At the last council meeting on January 8th, the council did approve the text amendment regarding projecting signs downtown. Did approve that amendment to allow products to be advertised on the sign itself, and that was approved on first and second reading.
Great. Okay. Anything else, commissioners? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So moved by Pearl, second by Castro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.